I'm gonna call the meeting to order at six o'clock. Start with a prayer, then a pledge. Heavenly Father, we just paused just for a moment just to thank you for this great weather you've given us. Could use a little rain. Also pray for the citizens of the village, the ones that aren't sick, the ones that are lonely, just give them comfort. Pray everybody around this table, give everybody wisdom to do what's best. Put your hands on this, I pray through Christ. Amen.
Amen. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everybody. Roll call.
Mayor.
Here.
Here.
Beverly.
Here.
Agnew.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
You have before you the minutes of May fifteenth. Questions, corrections? If not, entertain a motion, accept those.
I think most of your prayers are written.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Yes.
You have before you the bills. Any questions?
I had questions, Mayor, got them answered before we started. And if nobody has anything, hang on.
Second.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
Beverly?
Yep.
Bassett?
Yes.
I'm staying.
Beverly?
Yes.
Agnew?
I'm staying.
Martin?
Yes.
Notice of public hearing June eighth at six p.m. The zoning office, they hear a petition to rezone five twenty-five South Main Street from M two heavy industrial to our three single-family, two-family or three-family residential that's coming up this Thursday at six. Boards and commissions, the Newton Board met May thirty-first, minutes are in the packet. Any questions on that? Council Committee, Reforce Finance Committee met May fifteenth, minutes are in the packet. Anybody wanna?
Yeah, we met, we discussed the EMS levy, the millage for the proposed levy. Is it gonna generate enough? Do we need it? We'll have questions on it, what we currently have, how much it's generating. Cheryl's gonna discuss some with the county auditor and get back with us. And also, we discussed the pool and pool payments and terms and loans and, you know, what can we get with the local banks or any bank for best interest rate? And Cheryl's gonna check into that. She didn't have time before this meeting because she just got the numbers given to her like the day before, so she's gonna reach out to them and then we're gonna meet again to discuss some of it. So we're gonna set up another meeting for that.
Good. Any questions for Eric or committee?
I guess what did you guys, what conclusion were drawn with the EMS? The EMS, levy-wise, we definitely need the money. We currently have a ten mil and a two mil. The ten mil, that's based on the valuation of the property then, not now, which let's say generates hundred and sixty to hundred and seventy thousand a year. And we're looking at doing it at a five mil, which would generate two hundred and fifty to, let's say, two eighty a year, which, you know, I think lower millage would, the ten mil should do twice that, but we gotta wait till that one would time out, I believe, till that, until we can reassess the value of properties to keep that without putting a new one on there. So definitely need the money for mainly salaries for the most part because of having as many full-time EMTs. If you don't wanna have a full-time EMT department or we haven't covered all the time, then that's what the taxpayers would not wanna have, I guess. We won't have to do that, they're just, if they don't vote for the levy, we won't be able to staff at full-time. So Cheryl's gonna talk, look into that and talk with Jill Little, I believe her name is, and see what she had to say about her current levy, about changing it and kind of double-check to see exactly what the five mil would generate. Does that, do those numbers, are those affected by, I guess, what does it look like after these contracts that the townships are updated? That's the other thing we're looking to do too? Yeah. Okay.
The new contracts are starting in July. We're actually gonna vote on those titles tonight. Those all have increases. They've been increased this year and with additional increases for the next three-year contracts, I believe. So they're stepping up and paying more for the service. Milford, in fact, reached out to us to help coverage in a larger area. We talked to Bruce and John and with our staff. We basically cover the west side of the Fides count, you know, from the Sherwood jurisdiction on over. How do they rely on this part of the county? And it's really, I think it's vital to have both the fire EMS services, they need it.
So even after, even after these contracts are renegotiated, we still need more?
Well, yeah, I mean with the levy, absolutely, yeah.
I'm saying without the levy, so the contract renegotiations aren't enough, that's what you're saying? Correct. Yeah, so if you bump up theirs, let's just say five thousand dollars each a year and you're still shortfall by a hundred and fifty thousand of your salary's without all the overtime and extra coverage, I mean, you have to offset it. This would only be for EMS, I mean, is EMS only for what the proposed levy would be for? Yeah, that don't make sense, I just gotta see the numbers, so. Roy, you haven't seen the final numbers too?
Okay. You have until August?
We have.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, any other questions? Okay, Ministerator's report, Cory?
Just an update there from the well field and touch base a little bit with the water tower down there. And then, in case anybody wants to know, substantial completion for Maple Lane is scheduled for October thirteenth. That's, it has been reseeded, street done and all that, so.
Are they repaving or dispatching?
Repaving. Everything giving a big. And I did add the stuff for the zoning, the properties, stuff that has been tatted. I know there was three or four missions properties that were actually moved to that. Other than that, that's all I got.
Did you pick up any, you know, bids for Chicago?
I believe Mike received two from two different contractors.
Have you heard from the commissioners about tearing down old properties? They said, and I met with them Monday, they said this week sometime, so, or last Thursday, I mean, so they'll contact you or me or Mike.
I have not heard.
He thought there'd be some more money coming.
Hopefully.
Any questions for Cory?
Does the volleyball courts, does that work schedule, the volleyball court relocation, when does that slated to take place?
I'm hoping it'll be done within two weeks. That shelter house will come down. We're, the village, we will take that down ourselves, save some money, that wasn't part of the scope of the project with John and owner.
What shelter house?
Right next to the pool.
Okay, go under the pool.
Yeah, that needs to come down and make room for that pump house restroom area.
The building looking good, eh?
Yeah.
The initial intent was take a bit and try to rehab it, I guess, to make it look nice. And after looking into it a little bit more, it's not that good a shape for putting a couple, you know, a few million dollar pool and splash pad in or something.
It's not good enough to, to put a little where underneath it and kind of go out and move it?
We've talked about it and relocating it over where the volleyball courts are gonna go, but I think it's too far gone, yes. I mean, we're gonna take a look at it, but it's pretty rough.
Okay. It's been a long time.
Yeah, it'd be a lot of bracing, that's for sure.
Okay. Any other questions for Cory? Okay. Solicitor's report for Troy?
First thing I have is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash eleven, third reading by caption only, ordinance to levy a tax for fire protection in the village of Hicksville directing the Fides County Board of Elections, submit about question to the electors and authorizing an additional tax levy for such purposes.
Can I make a motion to table that until we get our final meeting?
Okay.
Did I answer a question as we were talking about the, you said for EMS only, does that need to, I mean, it's kind of all going in the same pool, but does that, does that verbiage need changed?
We said we can't, cause it's one department.
Yeah, it's one department. I agree.
Okay. Do we need to second the motion to table? Yeah. Roll call.
Barr?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Agnew?
Yes.
Next is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash twelve, first reading by caption only and ordinance vacating an unnamed street right away as plotted in Houston subdivision running between lot nine and Houston subdivision and lot three thirty-nine of the auditor's platte of the village.
That's the one we spoke about?
Yeah.
Okay. Probably should have all three readings, I'm guessing? Okay. You brought that motion?
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero eight is a first reading by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with, or for fire and emergency medical services with Hicksville Township and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend?
Everybody's reviewed that. I will have you in the wrong second, but you've been, hold on a minute.
Yeah.
Agnew?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Second, third readings, resolution twenty twenty-three oh eight by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, authorizing the mayor of the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract for fire and emergency medical services with Hicksville Township and declaring an emergency.
Quick question, so those are based on fixed fees, correct? That's not based on like how our revenue comes in from fire EMS? So if we vote to, they say in the fall of, if it happens, then we would basically, those their fees would still stay the same until the following year? Is that correct?
They'd go according to the contract. It's not tied into our rate at all.
Tied in the rates at all.
Into our rate. It's a fixed contract with them for how much ever, three years, for three years, but with escalators built in.
Right. I mean, their rate, their contracts are based on the number of average runs we do for the townships, both fire and EMS. There's certain levels of runs that we do. They're all kind of based on that, the return on the dollar with the runs and the insurance and things of that nature, so.
So.
Roll call.
I'll second, I'll second.
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Agnew?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine, first reading by caption only, resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, authorizing the mayor of the village to enter into a contract for emergency medical services with farmer township and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Agnew?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Second, third readings of resolution twenty twenty-three dash zero nine by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, authorizing the mayor of the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract for emergency medical services with farmer township and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Suspend the rolls? Or is this the third? Okay, I'm sorry, I forgot my second. Okay.
Roll call.
Agnew?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Agnew?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Resolution twenty twenty-three dash ten, first reading by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, authorizing the mayor of the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract for fire and emergency medical services with Milford Township and declaring an emergency.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Barr?
Yes.
Agnew?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
And resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven, first reading by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, authorizing the mayor of the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract for fire and emergency medical services with Mark Township and declaring an emergency.
Motion to suspend?
Second.
Roll call.
Barr?
Yes.
Agnew?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Second, third readings, a resolution twenty twenty-three dash eleven by caption only, a resolution of the village of Hicksville, Ohio, authorizing the mayor of the village of Hicksville, Ohio to enter into a contract for fire and emergency medical services with Mark Township and declaring an emergency.
So move. Second. Okay. Roll call.
Beverly?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Agnew?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Any questions for the solicitor? Okay. Department has the place change?
First off, I'd like to recommend to the mayor and the council to hire Alex Jackson, who completed his state exam today and passed. It's based off that he passes the physical drug screen background, so we made him an offer based off of that, as long as everything comes out good.
He just came out of the academy, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll recommend that we hire Alex Jackson for the department.
He is from the N A area, so he's, he's from the Fides County.
Young fellow?
Yeah, he spent four years in the military and he's got a family, he's got one child and one on the way, so.
Did you recommend, Mayor?
Alex Jackson.
I will, I will agree with you.
Can I second? Roll call.
Martin?
Yes.
Bassett?
Yes.
Beverly?
Yes.
Agnew?
Yes.
Clipper?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Okay, second thing is, I'd like to maybe get a vote, not this council meeting, maybe the next council meeting. Maybe Cheryl could put some numbers together to see where we stand with the enterprise rental programs that we can, for one, let Carl know for sure what we're doing for the twenty twenty-four. Also, I had received an email from Statewide Ford, when Ford goes open up their orders for the Ford vehicles for twenty twenty-four, you have to have a purchase order by August first with them if you were to go with them, to be able to get a twenty twenty-four vehicle. So I kinda wanna see where we fit with enterprise, if we're gonna go with that route, then where we stand. So if we could maybe do that the next council meeting, take a vote on it, I believe everybody who's heard of this deal about that, so.
How soon are you looking to get a, get a vehicle?
Well, I think we're related this way for twenty point four, so all we would need is a purchase, so if we were to get one from statewide, which that's where our last four have, three have come from.
Cause we have one budgeted for this year.
Correct. So, so that's why, according to what I read, is all we need to do is submit a purchase order. We would not need to pay for it at that time. What would you do, replace your Taurus? Taurus and try to get rid of the Crown Vic. I guess it falls on what enterprise is telling us, but yes, Taurus is riding in number one. Car is going for sure, so.
And replace it with what, what kind of vehicle?
Yeah, another SUV or maybe look at pickup truck, if anyone wants available in the pickup truck line, so.
How do you guys determine between the vehicles, very much your fleet, right, and your fleet, cause the fire EMS don't have any enterprise type? How are you guys gonna determine which vehicles are gonna go in the program and the cycle? I mean, cause I know you, you wanted some trucks replaced, so you want two, right? And we were going. You want two and they have two? Is that a cycle, like you said, is that something every year, we're gonna cycle a couple of vehicles out?
Well, the way the plan would work, it would be based off every four to five years.
Five to five, before they took one out?
And all, cause all the market's doing it, what in price would come in?
Yeah, yeah, so because it depends on the miles that we're putting on the vehicles, and I think he said we could go with a four-year to a five-year rotation.
The departments, the utility departments, they would be fine every four or five years mileage-wise, so we don't put miles on them.
Yeah, ours, ours might differ, it just depends, so. But I was looking at at least a four-year plan, cause, so.
Well, we haven't discussed it any since you, you discussed it last meeting. Are we gonna discuss it anymore to give him an idea of which way to go? I mean, we're having a short meeting right now, we could discuss it. We want him to do that, or?
Always go look back at her.
Yeah, that's why I said if we could do it the next meeting, she could provide us some numbers, where we stand.
I thought you had those.
We don't have the numbers.
Going through enterprise would be a little easier, cause you're making monthly payments on that like a lease and buying an outright through statewide or, you know, forty, fifty thousand dollars on a pocket.
I just know what I have in a contingency plan, so.
Okay, so we'll wait till the next meeting, got more numbers and go further.
Yeah, I know what we got for the contingency plan, but I don't know.
But that'll work by the next meeting, then we can.
Don't give you enough time?
Yeah, cause she'll be able to come up with the numbers, like we know we got thirty thousand that's in a contingency plan right now.
So you'd use that contingency for the payments?
Yes, that's, if she can, says that will work, we can do that.
Do you have a contingency for your?
Okay.
I don't run a contingency at all, capital out, like, what I, I think there is contingencies for unexpected stuff.
So this is like a new program for the voters to enter into for the next, you know, five, ten, twenty years? Maybe something, budget-wise, I mean, maybe finance can take a look at it, our meeting, the principal numbers with Cheryl and see what we have, what kind of value, you know, and maybe we can get ahold of the gentleman and say, four units, you know, we're looking at these kind of replacements, what kind of payments are total for the next, for the cycle.
I think it would be best, in my opinion, is if we had like finance at a meeting and we brought Carl in, myself and Mark, said these are what we're looking to exchange out. He can kinda give us a value, what enterprise would be paying us for those, and we need to know that before we can budget anything for payments for the next three years or, you know, at least for the next year, what we need to set aside for vehicle payments.
We're gonna make a payment every month.
I think there's multiple ways we can do it. I think you can do.
But I guess at the, at the end of the year, you can, you'll have numbers that tells you what it costs you to be in business with them guys.
Yes, correct. That's what we need, yeah, for sure. Yeah, that's the bottom line.
Okay, sounds like we got a plan. Okay, any other questions?
You have one more physician open, is that correct?
Yes.
And I know you had two applicants, just one of them looked promising, the other one did not?
Well, I've only had, had three applicants in what we're looking for.
Yeah, I was just curious, so hopefully we can get that one filled.
So we went, we went to the academy and recruited this gentleman, so.
Okay. Anybody got other questions for the chief?
Okay, I'm assuming everybody knows Sam's last day was June first, so.
Okay.
Are the academy numbers, cause that's a big pool, a lot of people poll, but they're usually a lot small.
Uh, they're very low.
Very low in numbers, I figured it's not like many people are going there for it.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. Fire and EMS.
I passed around the, our last two weeks of addition to this, the call hours, you can add the, the village of Hicksville had one of them now. We just come back from the water tower with a fire out in their, in their field. It was a big old railroad tie, it was on fire, so, other than that, I don't have anything else. Anybody else?
Questions for the chief? Okay, thanks. Park director, I don't see our Gary here. Well, we're talking about the park, hats off to Cory and company and committee.
Great.
Day in the park. Fireworks were a big hit, a lot of people down there last, that was Saturday night. So thanks, Cory. Next year, you thinking about the same week?
Yep, for Saturday in June.
Okay.
Fiscal officer, Cheryl?
We have your fund status, you also have a copy of the year-to-date so far cash summary, the revenue at two point seven, and your expenditures at three point three. We have the incontact utility collections, mayor's court, what if we turn it up a little? Our part is one sixty-nine, so.
Any questions? For the fiscal officer? Okay. Thank you. Marriage report, already talked about day in the park. This coming Thursday is a Huber patio concert series, starts at seven till nine. David Bussing will perform, so bring your chairs, there'll probably be some food furnished. But it's always a good time, so I'd like to see a good turnout, continue doing this. And thanks to King Insurance for sponsoring, S M T A, Hicksville Bank, and the Farmers and Merchants are the sponsors this year, so hats off to them, help pay for the bands. You have an ice cream down there, you serve it?
Maybe.
Maybe?
We haven't got the freezer down here yet, so.
Okay, so maybe ice cream.
But the Huber always has concessions, like candy bars, popcorn, drinks.
There might be a food truck down there too, we're not sure.
I've heard about that, yeah.
So come, maybe a little hungry, if you need some snacks. Night of Lights at the school is this Friday, right? Six to nine, that's always a good time and good cause. The circus is coming to town, put that on your calendar, June the fourteenth, two performances, five and seven thirty. So I'm starting to hear a little people talking about that, so that's a big, could be a big thing for the village. And also, our first meeting in July is actually July third, which is the day before the fourth, so I'm planning, we're gonna cancel that meeting the third, so the, our next meeting in June will be the nineteenth, so then in July, we'll cancel the third, and the next meeting in July will be the seventeenth, so enjoy your weekend, long weekend. And that's all I have. Anybody got any questions for me?
Skipping that one meeting without affecting anything for the number of readings.
No, I already checked with Cheryl, yeah, oh yeah. She said it'd be fine. Okay. Good question, I, that wouldn't be good. Anything else needs to be brought before this council? Did you wanna speak?
Yeah, that's fine. Things are going good down the plan, we're set to finish up that project here with the digester here for the next week or two, should be back up and running, so, but things are all in staying extremely busy.
Yeah.
Pulling out sludge, have another lead for another farmer, so I'll be sending out some more tests tomorrow, so maybe you can find somebody.
So no rain helps you guys?
Low rain does help to an extent, yeah, so.
But you don't have overflow or?
No, no we don't, so.
No, no, we don't, so.
Our catch bases are starting to smell pretty bad, we, we need some rain.
Yeah, anytime you got low, low flow like that, it will.
Yes, yes.
You're wrong. I've seen the lowest flow since I've been here last April. We're dipping down into below three hundreds. Just last week, we're in the four hundreds, only back up to a million earlier, let's